Good evening, everyone. Call for order, February twenty, twenty twenty-four at six P. M. Call for order and please join me for the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nellamothu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Tether.
Here.
We have a forum this evening.
Great. I think before we approve the agenda, we're gonna do a amendment?
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda this evening to add a closed session in accordance with MCL fifteen point two four three one G for the purposes of discussing a written legal opinion regarding an employee issue and to discuss the terms of an employment contract.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board and public announcements, any? Any member, anyone that would like to?
I have several.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, just as a reminder, Tuesday, February twenty-seventh is Presidential Primary Election Day. Voters can vote in person at their precincts, uh, at their, uh, between the hours of seven A. M. and eight P. M. Early voting has started. We've been underway since this past Saturday. Uh, as of this evening, we've had a total of hundred, one hundred and eight voters who have cast their ballots over, uh, the last four days. Early voting will end this Sunday at four thirty P. M., so there'll be no voting as of Monday, and then you're also able to go to your precinct then on Tuesday, Election Day. There's been over six thousand absentee ballots issued for this election. So far, we've received just over four thousand of them back. Please remember to turn your absentee ballot by eight P. M. on Election Day. We have secure drop boxes. Uh, we have one in the parking lot here. We have a new one at Fire Station number three. And, uh, also, as I had mentioned, uh, in a previous meeting, the law has changed, and you can now take your absentee ballot to, uh, an early, the early voting site during their business hours, so up until Sunday, or you can also take your absentee ballot on Election Day to your precinct if you do not want to turn it in, uh, here to be processed. And the last thing, I received this correspondence, uh, from the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, and they asked me to read this. Uh, the Oakland County Treasurer's Office is in the final stretch of our foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadline for the twenty twenty-one or prior year's taxes is on April first, twenty twenty-four. And that means if these taxes aren't paid off by April first, or any interested party hasn't entered into a repayment schedule with the Treasurer's Office by then, the property will be foreclosed. Since December of twenty-three, the Treasurer's Office has conducted over a thousand taxpayer assistance meetings to assist taxpayers with keeping their properties by working with them to get a repayment schedule and/or by identifying resources that may be beneficial to them in their situation. We are here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact us before tax foreclosure deadline if they have delinquent taxes for twenty twenty-one or prior tax years. Taxpayers interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting may call, uh, the county at two four eight, eight five eight, zero six one one, or they may visit oakgov dot com forward slash treasurer. Uh, some of the resources available to assist the taxpayers will include Financial Empowerment Center in the Treasurer's Office, which provides one-on-one financial coaching and services to help taxpayers achieve their financial goals. Uh, and Lake Shore Legal Aid provides legal services to people who are low income and seniors. That number is one eight eight, seven eight three, eight one nine zero. Uh, again, they're here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else? I just wanna chair, sit with the board. Um, last week, I met with Congresswoman Lisa McLean, who represents our township. And then we, we have a really good meeting. We, she was, uh, she wants to learn more about our township, some of the issues, and she wants to help, so she let us know about some funding and some grants that we're gonna be applying, some of the directors are gonna be applying for this. And hopefully, we, we can get some federal funding. Also, be, uh, with our Lansing Consultant and Laura Haynes, our Public Relation Director. We meet with Mike Harris, too, and we're looking some other ways also to get some state funding. And we saw, we met with Paul and Carrie and Mike Harris, and we look, explored some other opportunities as well to get, hopefully, this year and next year, some federal funding and state funding. That's gonna be good. So we're gonna be applying for it, and hopefully, we can get, uh, some positive results this year. So I just wanna chair that with the board. Anyone else? No? Okay. Uh, public comment. Anyone would like to address to the board? Anyone? Okay. Please, if you can come to the podium, state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Mark Newsom, ninety-four ten Ortonville Road, Clarkston. I live across the street from Bridgewood Church. Um, I've been up at this podium a couple times. Started twenty years ago. Um, I guess the main reason I'm up here is because of Brian. I didn't know it, but Brian was a consultant for Carlisle twenty years ago on the Bridgewood Church project. The land took special land use authorization. The meeting went for the public. We were told fifteen thousand square feet. A total of, I think it was seventy-one spots for parking with sixteen banked. Two hundred seating. That was the end of the meetings. When I tried to find out what they currently have, I went to Brian, because they're gonna expand. I went to Brian. I asked him to see the new prints for the church. Was looking him over, simple question, do you know how much square foot they currently have to compare to? And this was before any meetings about the expansion. Simple question, how much to add? There's the print you figured out. Okay, bad day, whatever. So then, I goes, what do they currently have? And he goes, well, that's why they make Freedom of Information Acts. So, okay, file, file. Well, I got four page, I asked, I've never filed one before. I filed it, asked for all construction prints, sketches, drawings, who signed off on it, whatnot. I got four pages back. Two of them I seen before at the meeting. Two, another one was scribbled all over, some kind of seating chart. Come to find out what they have built, and the only reason I even found out, because I actually had to file another one because of another talk I had with him. I did nothing but piss him off every time I talked to him. I don't know why. But what ended up happening is I had to find out from the Health Department what they had from a drawing that they had in their file. What was built was a twenty thousand square foot church instead of a ten to twelve, as we were told. Seating for two hundred changed to three hundred. And the parking lot changed to ninety-nine with nothing banked. Okay. There was no way for me to find this out through Brian. He would not tell me. And I cannot understand why until I started looking to what they have now. They were allowed ninety-nine spots. They now have over two hundred. This is special land use. There's, I thought anytime something happened, a meeting happened. Because we're influenced by what happens on that property. So they've actually added on to the parking lot three times, as recently as within the last month or two. In the last month or two, alls they did was put aggregate down because they know they're gonna do construction. Why waste it on asphalt or concrete? But you also have to understand, this property has a detention pond. When you add twice the parking, that pond is no longer good. They have over a thousand foot of road for an inch and not one ditch. All water either goes into that detention pond or right away, and we deal with it. It's not right. And during this whole process of trying to figure out what they're allowed, what they're not allowed, you also have to understand, originally twenty years ago, not one tree was planted. My understanding is every eight parking spots, you're supposed to plant a tree. Nothing was done. There's not one parking curb. Not one anything whatsoever to stop a tire from rolling off the parking lot. And if you walk into some certain areas of the parking lot, it's over a two-foot drop off. And this isn't just their liability, it's yours, too, because the public is welcoming, welcome at a church. What happens if somebody slides off, drops down, car falls off? They go to look, they trip, they fall off? You're liable. You said it was okay. Somebody said it was okay. It just, when I was looking to this, I also learned that a church is not supposed to produce any amplified sound outside of a bell, um, a call to prayer, anything like that, and it can't last, last any longer than five minutes. This church currently has, in the summer, a Wednesday evening child program out, and they play outside if weather permitting. They set up speakers, music, people talk through the microphones, and I can hear it in my house. And this goes on for three to four hours every Wednesday night, and it's not just me complaining. I'm the only one skidding up here, but my neighbors complaining. If you want their addresses and numbers, I can give them to you. But when I brought this to the ordinance's attention, I was told it's a church, mind your own business. We don't want sued. What do you mean you don't want sued? Apparently, somebody got sued in the city for not letting the church expand recently, within the last few years. This has nothing to do with that. And then he said, okay, we'll get sound measurements. Or actually, it even started before that. They didn't believe me. I had to video it, give it to them. That wasn't good enough. We'll go out there and measure it. When they went out and measured it, I was told the road traffic was too loud to get accurate readings, so live with it.
Okay. Mr. Newsom, um, um, you have five minutes, and I understand your concern. Can you come to my office tomorrow morning so we can address your concern and get the people in my office and with the care, okay?
We've already did this.
Well, I asked him to come.
You walked me into his office.
Well, I, I did.
And that's where this started.
No, I, I say, if you come tomorrow in the morning, I will make sure.
You want me to bring coffee and donuts? What time we start?
No, you don't have to do that, but, or you can come at seven, anytime.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. No, thank you. Thank you for coming to the board. Make sure my office and my staff take care of you tomorrow morning, first thing in the morning. Okay, anyone else? Okay, somebody online would like to address to the board. Um, yeah, Arnold, Arnold?
Yeah, am I, I'm muted?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I have a couple, pardon? Okay, I have a couple of comments regarding the February Planning Commission meeting.
Sure.
Okay. In that meeting, you know, Mr. Carlisle made some comments about the tree ordinance that was presented by the Open Space Committee, stating that, you know, it was just a reaction to the work that was being done behind Tim Hortons. And I wanted to correct the record, and, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if he knows, but the ordinance that, that we recommended, or that the Open Space Committee recommended, had nothing to do with Tim Hortons. The intended ordinance really was intended only come into play for site plan approval on future commercial development. So that was one thing. During that meeting, it was also discussed the work behind Tim Hortons. And I can't really understand how the township allowed all that work to proceed without inspection or enforcement. There was a site plan approved, uh, as far as I know, was pretty much ignored. The wetlands were never staked, the boulder wall golfed around the site plan was never built, storm sewers were installed, they were never inspected, and fill was placed for a future road, and all that was done with no inspection. Um, Mr. Ottman's answer to that was it wasn't an active job site, so it didn't require inspection. But what confuses me is how all that work could be done and it not be considered an active job site. Uh, going on, uh, Mr. Ottman also made some comments about the Bailey House. You know, I've been involved with the Bailey House. I'd been over there several times as a volunteer, uh, helping out with the construction. I think Mr. Wykoff and Mr. Morocco have done a fantastic job working with the high school students, attempting to introduce them to the construction trades. During my visits, I've never witnessed any violations, any safety issues, and I've been on a lot of construction sites. Um, Mr. Ottman also stated that Mr. Moran drove by the site and witnessed students working on the roof without safety harnesses. Well, I guess I can't understand that. The roof was installed in twenty eighteen. Mr. Moran didn't come onboard until twenty twenty, well after the roof was completed. And the only other thing I had is I'd like to encourage the township or the board to consider dissolving the Planning and Zoning Department and place that function back in the Building Department where it resided for years. This new department was created by a previous supervisor. Um, that led to a new director's position and all the salary and overhead that goes with it. And I think the township could save a substantial amount of money by just reincorporating that downsized building. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your coming. Thanks for caring about the township and for your comment. Just to update the board, I mean, we already have an investigation that we approved, and that, um, already the engineers, uh, went to the site, so we, it's matter of a few more weeks, and hopefully, we have that done, and I will make sure that you guys might know about the investigation about this site. Also, um, regarding, I did have a meeting with the superintendent from the school, Dr. Ryan, and, uh, we have a great conversation. As we know, the board always support the schools, and we have a great relationship with the schools. We, we, the board approved fifty thousand dollars for the hot light to support, you know, the light that is needed for the schools, so we have a great relationship. I talking about myself, I have a full support for the schools. I wanna, I mean, I myself, my stuff is supporting the schools, and we have a great relationship with the schools. There's nothing, any personal attacks or nothing against the schools or anything like that. But thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. We now have a public hearing. We now have presentations and report. We go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, number one.
I'd like to pull the check run out of consent agenda, because I've got some questions on it, please.
Which check run, trustee?
The check run.
The check run, okay.
Number two.
Number two, okay. Okay, you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the consent agenda, eliminating item number two and moving it to item number, uh, K. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay. Anyone would like to second that?
I'll support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now we can, I can continue.
I'll make a motion to approve the cons, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So number one, request to approve the board of trustees' regular meeting minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-four. Number three, I skipped number two because we didn't discuss that. Request to approve the fifty-three ten vehicle lease agreement, suburban mobility authority for regional transportation, SMART. Number four, request to approve twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, public service contract with Clarkston Area Youth Assistant, Kaya. Number five, request to approve the bit of firework for twenty twenty-four Independence Fest. And number six, request to adopt the Performance Resolution number twenty twenty-four, zero zero three for municipalities, twenty twenty-four annual permit for work on a state trunk line right away. And that will be, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we move to, okay, um, the check run. Okay.
Okay, I got a couple of, so, and, uh, I haven't been on the board that long, but is there a reason that we don't get a copy of the, that we don't have a copy of the invoices? Because it's, uh, this is one point I wanna ma, you know, it's hard to go through the check run when we don't see any of the invoices or know what any of the dollars are. So for us to be able to, uh, dissect that and see if it, you know, what it is, and I'm just not, I don't understand why we don't get a copy of the invoices that coincide with the dollar amounts. All we're getting is the dollar amounts, and then, um, there's no way to verify what work was done for that money. And that's a general question to the board members who have been here longer, why we don't, aren't pervy to the invoices as board members. If we have to approve the check run, I'd like to see the invoices.
Okay. Yes, Treasurer Brown?
Um, I'd be happy to have you come by. Anytime, after the agenda's come out and come back to my office, and I can go, because it's pretty easy, rather than just attach as many invoices this is might, as this might be, we can drill in at a better level, and I'm happy to do that with you at any point in time.
Well, the problem with it is, is that I don't know if I wanna talk about it if I don't know what the invoice is for.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you know, so if I see the invoice and I don't understand it, uh, but I might not know that I wanna come see it because I don't know what the dollar amount is. I mean, I'm really, I can't approve check runs that I know nothing about, and I really don't wanna go through the problem, you know, come every, every meeting and sit down and go through all the checks. Isn't it all in a digital file that we could have privately, like we do with our legal correspondences that only board members can access, like we do with contracts and stuff like that?
It's, it's a public document. Anybody in the public can see invoices. Those aren't private.
Where are they?
Well, there might be a few that are private.
They're held in P S A.
The legal bills might need to be redacted, but otherwise, they're public.
Well, the legal bill is what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
The legal bills.
So, yeah, if I might, um. So legal bills, you, you are entitled to see the invoices, including the legal bills. In, um, to put a legal bill in a public pack, it would require us to redact, um, certain communications that would be confidential.
Right.
So if the attorneys are asked to, to talk with anybody or to deal with an opinion, that would be confidential and it'd be redacted. But as a board member, you're entitled to the, the actual invoices unredacted.
Okay, upon request?
Yeah.
Or, and then who would I request those from in advance of the meeting? Carrie or?
Yeah, probably the clerk's office, yes.
Now, the reason I bring this up is because I've had some concerns, you can, maybe you need to stay up there, I don't know. I had some concerns before about our legal, um, uh, as far as, uh, one of the departments that we talked about before. Um, uh, that we had, uh, that I was concerned that we had quotes that were not to exceed quotes, and then we have a quote that is, you know, has gone way over that dollar amount. Um, I addressed it with the board, then I met with, you know, Jose was supposed to address it.
Your hand's about two inches from my face, man, you swing.
Sorry. Italian, I'll try not to use my hands. The, um, uh, so I got a couple of concerns that weren't addressed. So when I, uh, tried to inquire about this, um, why we weren't having, uh, attorneys rebid the contract, which as far as I can see is expired, was expired on December thirty-first of last year. That's why I brought it up in December, early in December fifth of last year. Because I can't find any contracts or extensions that were done with, 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 with the prosecuting firm that didn't, that didn't expire past December, uh, thirty-first of last year. That's the reason I brought it up last year, because I think that there's, you know, that, that in, in, um, good faith, since we have other bids that were non, not to exceed bids, and we've almost doubled that last year with the contract we had. I felt it was warranted to have somebody reach out to, to, uh, because the, the contract had expired, to ask for a not to exceed bid, um, because we already did a budget amendment last year. So we're about, and what I could tell is we're about forty thousand over what our not to exceed bid was, and I'm not saying that it isn't worth the money. What I'm saying is, is that we don't have a contract with this firm right now unless someone can produce one, because they're annually, um, extended by a signed agreement between the township and the firms annually, which I'm not aware who has the authority to do that except this board. It didn't come, I didn't see it come up to us, uh, to be extended another year. And when I asked Mr. Aliaga to address the, you know, to get, figure out what's going on and let me know, um, I was at work one day, and he called me on the phone, and I answered the phone, and he's like, hey, I'm sitting here with the attorney. What's your problem? Which I was not prepared to litigate a lawyer at that moment while I was on a construction site, but I did, but I did, um, to try to get to, to the bottom of it. So I don't know that anything ever got done with it, and I just wanna make sure that. So we have contracts of not to exceed seventy-two thousand dollars. We have a budget allowance of a hundred thousand. We amended that to go well over that for last year. So what I wanna, I just wanna make sure that the board is aware of this, and that they either want to correct the problem or not correct the problem, because, um, I felt it very inappropriate that I was put on the spot with an attorney, and I'm the one telling him what's wrong with the him what's wrong with the, you know, what my issues are and how I want them addressed. And then I was forced to tell him what the other bids were, which I didn't want to do, which I protested several times, and I just felt that it's ridiculous that, that's how that was handled. And not only that, there's no, there's no foreclosure, there's no closure with the issue. You know, we, I think that the, the, the right thing to do is to have someone else talk to, to, we need the board, I think the board should have a consensus, whether you want to put it out for a bid again, do you want to get a non-compete, or just leave it as an open-ended bill and we'll just pay whatever it is that comes in. And I didn't see any bills, so I can't justify what these numbers are, you know? And I don't know how long the span is. If I get a bill in January, in February for January and it's saying that 72 hours were spent in prosecution, that seems like an awful lot of hours spent in that, you know, not being a lawyer. So I don't know how to deal with the board all the time. So I'm just putting it out there that we don't have a contract as far as I know. We're paying more than we probably need to. I'm not saying we shouldn't pay more than what the lowest bid was or the not-to-compete bid was, but I don't think it's appropriate that we have an open-ended contract with no cap when other firms have provided that service to us and that cap to us. And that just seems like we're not being very respectful of the spending of money to do it, you know? So what to do with my statement? I don't know. If anyone on the board has a comment, welcome to hear it.
Okay. First, Sam, thank you, Mayim, for bringing that to my attention. When I called you that day, I was acting with good faith. I want to understand your question with him so he can answer the question. I wasn't trying to trick you or nothing. Now, Jim wasn't in the board when we approved those contracts. Actually, after I took office on, it was before I took office on November 2022, the board approved those contracts and it wasn't me approving all those contracts, the board. Before even you came, I think, it was Jerry Fisher who brought that in.
No, I was here when they were approved.
It was, yeah, Jerry was the supervisor.
Not in 2022.
Yeah, because Paul and I remember removing, it was four, five bids at that point and we just said four, not five. For, if I recall correctly, it was five bids and we decided just to go for four, because typically, traditionally, we just have four services, not five. And the board vote to have the services for persecution, you know, and I cannot talk about much, but I don't have any problem, I'm going to take a look if those contracts expire. I, I don't have any problem, but let me take a look first to see if they expire or not. All right? I don't have a problem.
But that doesn't tell me that you're going to do anything. You said you were going to check into it last time, but you didn't even understand what I was talking about.
No, I, I do, Sam.
You do? What is my concern? Explain it to me, so I know that we're all on the same page.
Sam, your concern is, you even told me I cannot talk about our attorney, but you want to make sure, we already spending, you said so much money in, in one of the vendors and then you want to make sure that, you want me to call for new bids to make sure we get the best rate.
I'm telling you that the contract's expired.
I know. You already told me, I'm going to take a look this week. But also keep in mind, Sam, when I talk to the persecution, I mean, we taking a lot of more persecution.
I'm not interested in that.
I know, but it's, no, but it's coming more cases.
We have a not to exceed bid, I don't care how busy the guy is, that's irrelevant. That's why you have a not to exceed bid.
Okay. Anyone else would like to comment about this? Okay, Thresha Brown.
So I'll try to share sort of my perspective, trustee Morocco. A lot of times when we go out for bid, we're looking for the low bid. And I know in your professional career, that's often what you do, you're looking for the people to do your framing and your other things, or it's a fairly homogeneous product. And when we're talking about professionals, the bidding and awarding of contracts to professionals is not typically done based on who's the low bid. Because we could go get lawyers who do it for 50 bucks an hour, but they just came out of college, or they just got their law degree. And so there's a little bit more consideration giving to, given to awarding these professional contracts. Again, this is my perception, my opinion, having been on the board all these years. And yes, there were people who bid it at not to exceed $70,000. What I, what I know, and again, in my career as a CPA and at a CPA firm, certainly I had responsibilities to have billable hours, right? And anyone who's a professional understands that. You work for a firm, you've got billable hours. If they come in with a contract that's a $70,000 not to exceed, but our prosecutions double and so they're working twice as many hours, there aren't any firms that are going to want to stay with that job when they're making 60 bucks an hour. Because I don't know any lawyers that charge less than 150, 100, and that's inexpensive, really. So the idea that because prosecutions were a lot higher this year, I agree, you should have some detail on that to the extent we can. You have every right to see what made that up on a month-to-month basis and probably wouldn't be that hard for me to put together an analysis of basically on the hours, how many hours were billed in 2021, 2022, and what were the proximate causes of that increase in hours. That should be an easy thing to me produce, for me to produce, so that you can have a better understanding of what the hours were. But to just say we should go with a lower bid without looking at all the understanding of details, I, I guess I don't want to go that direction, but I'm happy to do what I can to provide information for you to have you be more comfortable.
Trustee Morocco.
Well, what I'd like to say to that is that he was the lowest bid. The guy who's charging us twice as much was the lowest bid by the hour. I believe what happened, and this is just speculation, that we did go with the lowest hourly bid and nobody read the rest of the document to get to the non, not to exceed bid that was later followed down by other firms. So every firm had, this is our hourly rate, the firm we're currently using was the lowest paid hourly quote we had, but it was missing the not to exceed line further down the document is the concern. So we did go with the lowest guy. And I wouldn't say that, you know, with, with the Kelly firm being one of the other bidders and there was three other bidders that bid it, that were also reputable companies that, and I'm not saying he's not worth some, more than the lowest not to exceed bid, but what I'm saying is we have $100,000 in the budget. We have a contract that's expired. We have the ability to cap it at that and not go over. And I don't care how busy he is, and if that doesn't work, we have other firms that will do it for even less than that. So I don't, I can't, that's what I'm just saying. It doesn't make any sense that we're paying ex, all this extra money. Not to say I want him to be the cheapest guy, because I've heard that he is very good at what he does. So I'm not saying he should do it for the lowest amount.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is that it's foolish of us to have a wide-open not bid, that we have no idea what the outcome's going to be when the other firms have offered us the opportunity to control our costs. That was the point of my conversation.
All right. Trustee.
And I think it behooves the board to at least dig into whether or not there is an expired contract. Because I mean, again, I will defer to the senior members of the board, but we don't typically let contracts expire and then fail to renew them, right? I would, I would assume that we should always be under contract, because then it creates, you know, an op, an opportunity for us to perhaps overspend, misspend, whatever the word is. So if, if you and your staff could look into whether or not that was expired, I think that would be really helpful. And I believe that's really all trustee Morocco is asking for at this point. And we can have deliberations about who the best, the best attorney is at the best value and if, if the incumbent attorney proves to be the winning bid, that that's great. But at the same time, if we do have an expired contract, I think it'd be great, you know, perhaps by next meeting to determine, A, if there's an expired contract, and B, how we open up the bidding process.
Sure. Jim, again, nobody's disagreeing.
Here's a copy of the signed contract, so you have it, you don't have to look it up.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate it.
Now, I saw, I saw in the last bidding process was a committee put together.
Can I interject?
Sure.
This is the most current one you're saying, Sam?
It's the one that we approved in 20, December of 2022 to go to December of 2023. And then, and it's, and it's been renewed every year annually with a signed letter from both parties since 2019.
The board went out to bid since I've been on, on the board and this contract was signed by a prior clerk.
I know, but I'm saying.
So we have a more current one, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, when we approved the bids in 2023, there's multiple ones. This was the first one, then there's one with your signature on it. I'm sorry, Paul. There's one with your signature on it that came later. And then according to his contract, we renew with him annually with a signed agreement from both parties, annually, since I think '05, we've been doing it like that with this firm. So I'm not, you know, they've been around a long time, I'm not saying they're not a good firm. I'm just saying that we've been doing an annual renewal and we did, you know, and I, I can only go off of the privileged information that the board was pervy to in December of 2022 when we did all the contract renewals. This is what, all that was in that package at the time.
To my knowledge, this is the extension letter off of that contract.
Right.
We did go out for bid, we interviewed them here in a public meeting and there is a new contract.
Okay.
I, I don't believe that new, I don't believe that new contract is expired. I don't want to speak falsely, because it's not in front of me, but I don't believe it is expired yet.
But if it was.
And I can get that for you tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying if it was done annually like it has been, as it appears in the past, we would have, in December, we would have kicked over another year. But I can only access the documents that I have in our township, you know, trustee access only file, and this was all that was in there. So if that's the case, I'm just, you know, I think that it's.
I think the current one was probably for a little bit longer. I don't believe we were doing just the one year, but I'll get it and then I can speak more correctly, you know, when I have something to talk about that I can read.
I would appreciate that, Carrie.
These are outdated.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I will make sure we email you the current contract tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Carrie, do you remember we have a committee that worked in those contracts before it came to the board? I remember it was a committee, I think, with two board members or three?
No.
No?
I mean, we interviewed them and then, yes, we did, there was a subcommittee that went over the bids and then we interviewed them.
Yeah, it was a subcommittee that reviewed those contracts, okay, that's, yeah. So it was a review before it came to us to, yeah, okay.
In my, off the top of my head too, Sam, I don't remember there being a not to exceed, but I don't want to talk further and then be wrong, so.
I got you.
But this is some outdated information, so we'll get to, we'll get to the updated stuff and we'll go from there, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Well, on that note, I'll make a motion to approve the check run.
No, I want to keep, I understand, but he's got a pen in front of me. No, I just want to keep this.
That's a crocheting.
Al's work.
Don't worry about it.
That's fine.
I just have a question, because we actually didn't read that. You usually read the check run, so I would prefer that you go through the process of reading the check run numbers before the motion is.
Oh, okay. All right. You want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You pull it up.
Sorry about that. I'll make a motion to request to approve the February 13, 2024 check run, including ACH 1,124,296.49 ratified the February 2, 2024 payroll of $311,310.71 and the December 2,023 EFT ACH wire activity of $609,855.95.
There's some more.
There's more? That's all that's, I got on the agenda that says it right here. What'd I miss?
For a total amount of $2,45,463.15.
Yeah. All right.
Oh.
Amounts support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Good. Moving on. Regular business. As we know, we talked about this before, about the transit mileage and what, what's going with NODA. So I would like Adam and Jennifer, Adam is coming? Okay. And I know we have a member from the road commission in and NODA here today for any questions, so.
Thank you. So really, I'm here to, to update you and then ask that you accept this program. We're going to call it a pilot program, lack of a better term. But back in October, through a motion, the board trustees asked that they directed the township to work on this program. Since then, we have met at least three times, I think, maybe, maybe more. And in trying to work out this program, it really had come to our attention that the program or the agreement is between NODA and the county. There is a subsequent agreement that in the motion, we're asking that the Independence Township and NODA are going to work out some vehicle parking, some access, some room, because of, and lack of a better term, maybe a hub. They want to use Independence Township as a hub for, to do some northwesterly routes. So in talking, we, we presented the amendment to your Exhibit A of their agreement. So if there are some things that maybe you'd like to see in that agreement, I'm talking to the two people that probably can get that done to include a little more of independent specificity, if needed. If not, then we're looking to accept that and then move forward. If we can accept that, then move forward with our agreement with NODA for the, like little intangibles, the parking, the, you know, the bus use, the, the space for the office, things like that. So really, we're just asking for a motion, maybe to accept it. If you have any questions, I brought Lynn from NODA and Eli from the county to answer any of them, just in case you had any. And then I guess direct us to move forward. We, we threw in, you know, much to Sam's dismay, the Kelly firm to help us with the, the legal term of the agreement between the two of us.
Not to my dismay.
But that's, that's really what we're looking for and we can answer any, any questions if we can.
Sure. Claire, any of it?
I think for the public's sake, I think we need to clear first and foremost, did the county approve our pilot program that the board approved on that level? I think we need to start there before we delve into subcontracts with NODA or whatever, so.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Eli Cooper. I'm the Oakland County Transit Manager. And the simple answer to the question is not yet. The same materials that have been provided to you have been provided to the Board of Commissioners Transit Committee and they have it on their docket for February 26th. We would assume that they will approve it, since we have discussed it with them as it developed and then they will be making a recommendation, as is the course for transportation or transit-related items at the Board of Commissioners. It goes from a Transit Committee to our Departmental Committee, which is the Economic Development and Infrastructure, and from there, it will go to the Board of Commissioners at their first meeting in March. So we do not have the final votes in order yet, but all of the materials are on the agenda for the forthcoming meeting, which will set in motion the process for those materials, assuming that they get approved. And of course, if there are any adjustments that come up between here and next Monday, that, you know, until such time that they act on it or until it's recommended and approved by the actual Board of Commissioners, there's still a little bit of flexibility. We have tried to work very closely, both with township staff and with NODA, to make sure that the provisions are consistent with what all of the parties would like to have and that we look forward to a longstanding relationship and positive service, both with the community and for your residents. They're all of our residents.
I have a, not a, I guess, a follow-up.
I've not really been privy to these meetings, so I have to sort of play catch-up. But the township receives yearly municipal credits. If this pilot program is approved by the county and we're in that for six months, are we going to continue to receive municipal credits in that interim? And if not, will we continue to receive municipal credits?
So it's my understanding from the arithmetic that has supported the agreement that's come forward is that the municipal credits will be needed to fund the program that the township is providing through the beginning of March. So the simple answer to that is yes. And then as this is a demonstration process, once we complete the demonstration and if the terms are agreeable in terms of the levels of service and the quality of service, it's typical that when you look. service, it's typical that when you look at the municipal credit agreement from SMART, there are four boxes to check. And at that point, the appropriate box to check that the county has worked with the other communities is for the municipal credits to be afforded to the operator that provides the transportation services, because the municipal credits are statutory money limited only to transportation services.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes. Eli, if you can come in front of, yeah, if you can come front to the microphone. Justin Delamato.
I have one when I was reading through the draft about the, the cost of the rides, the $2 and all. Is this part of the transportation tax thing that was voted on? Because I thought that was bringing free services to the area. So the $2 rides just confuses me.
Yeah. So the mileage language itself described the operators and the, the mileage level for the actual county collections. I do not believe that there's any provision within the ballot language that indicated that this would be free service. As a matter of fact, one of the things that occurred between the county transit staff prior to my arrival, which was about four months after the, the mileage vote, was that there was an agreement structured between the county and all of the operators to have a consistent and uniform fare across several operators. NODA, WODA, OPC and People's Express are all in the same $2. So the, the terms complimentary service, I do know that some of the operators provide introductory tickets for get to know us, try us. But no, the, the county collaboration with the operators has reached a $2 per fee, per ride fee for disabled elderly, low income veteran services. General public is priced at $4 per trip.
And does that, follow-up, does that specify how many miles you can go or?
So each one of the agreements that we have with the operators has what's called the driving or service area. And so there's a, there are the municipalities or communities that are served by that operator, and that's the residents. But the driving territory is typically a larger area, so that if somebody wants to go to adjoining community to receive service outside of the immediate home residence community, that's covered. There is also a provision, should there be a trip that wants to go even further than the defined driving boundaries, that there's a mileage charge that has been, again, negotiated between the county and the operators as a reasonable cost recovery, more so because the operators themselves have calculated what it costs to deliver service to the residents within the communities. And given the driving distances and experience they have, somebody from Independence Township wants to go out to South Lyon, that's well beyond the driving district, and there's quite an amount of mileage which adds into time. And they do have both operating costs and the cost of the operator. And that the, the fee will not recover all of those costs. So it's still, we've done a couple of analyses. It's still a much lower cost if somebody needs an out-of-district trip than if they were to contact an Uber for services as a point of comparison. So I'm not going to stand here and say it is very inexpensive, but it is the least cost of the options when we look at what other alternatives a person might have if they wanted to travel a greater distance beyond the driving territories.
Thank you.
The way I read this is, I think it's what you're saying, is that this is an agreement between North Oakland County and, or Oakland County and NODA.
Correct.
We're not involved in this agreement.
What, to the extent, and in terms of, if I were a lawyer, I would probably just agree with you and say, and move on. But what I want to be clear is that NODA is an entity that is supported by the county. And that as we began the conversation with the chairman of the board and your commissioner, there was discussion about what are the, who is the operator, what are the terms of service? And so we had a multi-party conversation, as was described, three, four meetings where we created the detail. Now, yes, my corporation counsel indicated that our agreement is with NODA, but to the extent that NODA is to pivot and that they're committing to you the items that you will put in the agreement with them, that will be, become the eligible expenses that we will reimburse them for based on the provisions of the contract that we have with them. You'll also see in there that, for example, the demonstration or pilot process and the, the timeframe of review has been incorporated in our agreement with NODA in order to make sure that you believe that you've been heard as we've gone through this period of discussion, dialogue. I don't want to use terms like negotiation because we're all public agencies working to the same end result.
Right. But I don't see that we haven't, we don't, I mean, the way I read this, after six months, there's going to be an evaluation by somebody logging this in. I think we're going to do a survey ourselves with our residents to get some accurate data and feedback. And I think we have already started that, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't see any, there's no language anywhere that I've read that gives us any kind of an out or recourse or any way to back out of the deal, even if it falls apart after six months. Where's, where's that agreement?
So what I can interpret for you is that it speaks to the six-month period, and that's the extent of the agreement that we have with NODA. We anticipate that over the course of the six-month get-to-know-you experience, that it will be positive and it'll be a desire to continue to move forward. Part of what we have established is not to wait for the six-month period, but that about four months, we're going to kind of take a pulse check, see where we're at in order to begin to make the adjustments, in order to amend the contract, in order to make this, assuming it's all positive, a permanent part of the relationship that, and service area that NODA will provide to, to Independence Township and the surrounding area as part of their base area. And if it's not, that would be something that we'll be working with, with Lynn and her team to find out how they could remedy any defects that had been identified, and/or with your staff to find out, okay, if this is really something that, you know, much to all of our surprise, isn't working well, we'd have to explore what the alternatives are at that time.
Okay. And we're not at any risk of losing our buses or any of that in this interim trial period?
I can only speak to the, the fact that we have a relationship with NODA and that NODA is working with the community to, to utilize. You have a separate agreement with SMART that indicates what your requirements are to maintain possession of these federally-funded vehicles. As long as they remain in service within this community, I don't think there's any risk. The issue is, quite frankly, if they're not logging a certain number of utilization per the agreement that you might have with SMART, that would be a conversation with SMART, not with us in Oakland County. We're not looking to quote unquote, see you damaged in any way. And our expectation is all of the material that you're looking at, the terms, the contract provisions, have been negotiated in good faith with the intent that the services that NODA has provided through its base communities will be extended here. One example that I'll just use quickly is Independence Township has been running a fleet of five or six vehicles, some of which have not been operating. NODA is coming in with a fleet of 10 vehicles in order to initiate service. So there's going to be more equipment running in the community, providing more trips to your residents, both more trips and greater distance trips. I'm hoping that the reception of the community to the professionalism, professionalism of NODA and its staff will resonate and that we'll continue to be working together for years to come.
Okay. And I've sat in a couple of meetings with you, and I believe you to be genuine in your intent. So don't get me wrong. I just want to make sure that we're, if this, something happens, that we're not starting from scratch again if something falls apart because this contract isn't with us. So I just want to make sure we were protected in that manner, that after the, you know, the trial period, that we could, if we had to, that we could still operate and service our residents if something, there was a stumble or something with the agreement. You know, that's my, that's my concern.
And what I would say to you as Oakland County, you know, our Board of Commissioners and our villagers to assure that that service is available. And at this point, NODA is the closest alternative in order to deliver the higher levels of service that are needed. And I'm maintaining, you know, the same aspiration and hope, expectation that we'll be able to continue, that NODA will deliver the services and we'll move forward from here. If not, we're going to be here to work with you. You know, Independence Township and Oakland County are one and the same. You know, our boundaries are a little larger, but the constituents, the residents are ours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Carrie?
I don't know if Mr. Klein can answer this, or you, Mr. Supervisor, or Jennifer, but since it sounds like we're in an influx with the contract that we have with SMART, has Township Legal looked into that? I would think that the terms of the contract with SMART for their vehicles that we have with the township is the township's drivers, the township staff, that kind of thing. Is, does there need to be a bridge contract with SMART done before we enter into this contract, possibly on March 1st to protect the township?
So again, come back to the mic for the folks at, at home. It's my understanding the answer is yes. That SMART itself has an internal process for administration of these federally-funded vehicles. And that that conversation, I had a conversation with their Vice President of Finance going back when we first met in the fall, and was given an indication that they would work with us to facilitate the use of the vehicles for the demonstration, and with the intent that they may be transferred if it was successful. But what I cannot, you know, testify to or attest to is if they were not to be used as part of the demonstration, providing the services within the community, what SMART might do under those circumstances. It was recognized in terms of, you know, government efficiency, these vehicles are federally funded, they're available for service within the community. They have been, if you will, allocated to Independence Township through the 5310 program process. And that NODA would just assume the operation and that SMART would help facilitate that, to the extent that if that were not to be the case, I'm not prepared to address that. That would be a question more for SMART and, and their team.
I just think Township Legal should look into that to cover the township since we as the board and the township entered into that contract. So we're not fully facilitating that contract. It's kind of morphing. And I just.
Conversations have been had, Jennifer and SMART. There's been no movement as of yet. We've explained everything that's going on. We have nothing back from SMART. And we probably, if I'm, if I'm correct, don't anticipate much back from SMART because the length of time it takes to get information back from them might exceed our pilot program.
Well, if the border, or if the county approves this on Monday and we're looking to move forward as of March 1st, is that correct? To be actively?
They're going to, they're going to go forward with what they have.
So we will not, I'm not comfortable.
Smart cannot, they, they are the ones that give permission for the buses to move any direction.
Just doesn't appear that we're dotting all of our i's and crossing our t's. And I'm, myself, I'm not comfortable with that. But I do, I can sympathize with the length of time that it gets to hear from SMART and get documents, get things back. I can totally empathize. I, I've dealt with that with Jennifer for the last several years. It's just, seems like we should have had our, you know, our steps better in order. And I don't know, you've attended these meetings, and I think you're facilitating this, I hope, for the township. And I, I'm just concerned that things are falling through the cracks. So.
Which things?
Well, the SMART contract that we have, our township contract with SMART. And it's not, we're not going to be using the vehicles ourselves. It's now morphing into possibly this pilot program. And we don't have any, I don't.
The pilot program does not include the vehicles.
They're not going to use the vehicles whatsoever?
Correct. Not unless SMART, which is a separate contract, you're right, which has not been discussed with, I mean, we discussed it with them. We have nothing written from them. They can't go anywhere unless SMART gives written permission. Period. That has not been brought to you because we don't have anything to bring to you.
Okay. I guess was under the understanding that NODA did not have enough vehicles and our vehicles were going to need to be used, possibly utilized.
We would like to go on that route.
If that's the case, then.
But it's not the route.
Right. If I may.
Certainly.
Lynn Gromoski from NODA. Yes, our, our first intent was to have the transfer of the Independence vehicles. However, our last word from SMART was, it was going to take us six months for us to do the transfer. So when I spoke with Jennifer, I thought we could start the transfer process for the six months. And at the end, if the, if the pilot goes successfully, then the paperwork will, will be in place by then. And then we can do the transfer vehicles at that point. In the meantime, we are supposed to be getting eight replacements for 5310 and SMART's allowing us to keep our old ones along with those. So that's what we're going to be using. Plus, we're purchasing 10 vehicles on our own, which will be coming. We have one this week. A majority is going to be coming in March. So we're going to be a little short right at March 1st, but we're hoping by the end of March to have those extra 10 vehicles. So that will help us also bridge the gap.
Well, that will be just solely for our, our area?
We're looking to have up to 10 routes, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM in your area, and up to five routes on Saturday and Sunday. Currently, there is a service in the weekends, and we're going to be starting that up March 1st.
Okay.
We're currently operating right now for the, for the weekends and the after hours or out of service areas. So we've been working with Independence for those trips, but effective March 1st is when we're looking to actually take over all their normal recurring rides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee.
Thank you. Got a few questions. And I would concur that what's the motion before us? There's, there's a lot of incompletes and unknowns. And I guess, I'm fairly new to the board, but I've been following this, you know, from afar as, as a resident of the township. And my understanding is that the township has sent, assembled a pretty comprehensive list of items for the proposed pilot program. But instead of an acknowledgement of, of that, or maybe some sort of response, hey, not this, but how about this, that we, we have before us, a, a budget amendment that incorporates Independence Township. But that, again, has been mentioned that, that budget amendment is between NODA and Oakland County. So I feel like we're, we're in the, you know, in the, in the backseat kind of observing what's going on. So, but at the same time, being asked to support a pilot program that, for me, seems really ambiguous right now. And I've heard, you know, I've heard mixed reviews about what's happened to date. Some people are very satisfied, others are frustrated because they're not making a dialysis appointment because of a shortage. And, and so we're, we're kind of in, and I, you know, I do wish the program great success because our township residents in aggregate are, you know, footing 1.8 million dollars. And we're going from 160,000 a year, which, to 1.8. So certainly, we all want it to succeed. But that being said, it seems to me that there's going to be a period in which, assuming that all goes well and all residents are served that need to be served. Because we're really, at the end of the day, we're not talking about the convenience of me jumping on a bus and going to the Tigers game. That's sort of the novel, high-level, maybe, you know, down-the-road option. But really, we're talking about ensuring that our seniors and our disabled population, people with health and medical issues that are unable to drive themselves are able to make their appointments. And I personally don't believe there's any room to allow those people to fall through the cracks. And so whether that means Independence Township maintains some sort of auxiliary program in order to ensure that there's no resident that goes unserved, that's a big concern of mine. I understand there's a broader vision within the county. But at the same time, as a steward of the people here in the township, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that they are still getting the same services they've come to enjoy and appreciate over the past many years. So I'd like to see more fleshed out with what this pilot program means for us as a township and to have ownership of that, rather than being a, a third-party observer that's just kind of watching from afar. And right now, it seems like, well, hey, trust us, we're, we're optimistic, this is going to work. But I'm, I'm a little nervous about that right now. Again. But I'm, I'm a little nervous about that right now, again, namely, in consideration of the folks that, that need this service the most. So I'll stop there for a moment and see if there are any comments or thoughts regarding what I've, what I've shared to, to date.
I can tell you that we, we have talked, so specifically the drivers. Drivers, our part-time drivers have applied at NODA, most of them. I, I still through the process and we're hearing, I think, positive things about the training that they're going through and things like that. We, we do have a full-time driver and we are keeping two currently. We maybe have one operational bus to pick up any of those that fall through the cracks during this program. Now, that will, something that we'll have to come back and discuss after this program is finished. And you're, based upon your decision, you know, where are we going to keep this gentleman? Are we going to maybe rework his job description to include that? We do have some trips and things already planned that he'll be driving, correct? So we have at least a safety net if these things fall through. We have planned for that. But again, ending at the sixth month, we'll have to make a decision. You'll have to make a decision, we'll bring more information back to you and we'll see what you say. Or, or you'll tell us which direction you'd like us to go in.
David Newick?
I think kind of to follow up to one of trustee Tutter's questions about making sure no one's falling through the track, cracks. You've mentioned something about Jennifer maybe be working on a survey. Is that survey going to be live as of March first? Or how are complaints and things like that so that you can better serve the residents? So you're, you're knowledgeable, rather than, you know, four months in, we say 17 people fell through the cracks, but, you know.
So we have, we have a pro, a pilot program outline that we had presented. So that is a little bit different than what the county came back in this draft for. But it does, it does address those, those issues so that we can, and drafted in that. And we are kind of using that as our guide at this point until we get something formalized. But in that, we have, since November, and we have been encouraging all new riders who call us, or call us and want transportation services to register with NODA. And we have been collecting feedback in our office regarding their experience. We're asking new riders to let us know their experiences. And we're tracking that information of who's, who's giving us that feedback. And then our, our plan was to, with this tentative March first start date, which we have been working towards and are in active process of doing. At about the three-month mark, we would send out an evaluation to all of our current riders that are registered with us, who have now submitted applications and are going to be riding with NODA, what their experience is. So we, we have a drafted survey to send them. And we would do that at around the three-month mark. And then we would do that evaluation once again around the six, at the end of the quote unquote pilot program that we were looking at that six-month mark. So we have an evaluation process currently in place for people that have started using the service. And then people that have, as we have been encouraging folks to register, we are, you know, asking for feedback along the way. You know, if, if they need any kind of support from us, we have provided that. We've been working parallel with NODA up to this point to, to, you know, make sure that, you know, people are, are comfortable in getting registered and getting in, collecting that feedback as well. So when we come back, we have, you know, we have a good idea of where people are, what they're feeling.
Okay, I had one, one other, I'm sorry. After he talked about the employee not thinking about the employee. So then from March first and then for six months, this is a full-time employee. His full-time job currently is to be a driver, correct?
Correct.
So if he is not full-time driving, how are we going, and where's the money coming from to pay that salary? If we're only receiving the municipal credits, possibly for the first quarter, it sounds like? And his job description, I mean, how is all of this changing and it's not coming to the board? Is he going to be...
Well, his, his job description hasn't changed yet. What it, what it's going to be status quo until, he's going to full-time drive. There is in his job description entitled, "All other duties deemed necessary by director or by Jennifer." We're going to have him do other things also.
I believe his title is called van driver?
Yep.
Okay.
So, so the money, so part, part of his, part of his wages do come through grant funding? Either municipal credits or CDBG funding? So that will, that allotment would be fulfilled through his work through March? And, and so that will, those monies would be allotted there? That position is written into the senior budget for a year. And so I've worked with Adam and Lisa to formulate a, an outline of what his other job duties would look like during the pilot program piece of that. Part of that would be driving, but then there are other, and we, we provided an outline. And I'm not sure where that went, if it's gone to the union or not. But we do have that outline in place. And it's written as, you know, in addition to his driving duties, what those all other duties would entail during that time. But part of that would be driving if we were to keep a, a, we, a van or a vehicle, as Jim mentioned, or trustee Tutter mentioned, as an auxiliary. So that we have that vehicle available.
And also, correct me, I'm sorry I'm being lengthy, but isn't there another employee whose primary job was programming and scheduling of these rides? And what is happening with that person's position? And I thought that that was their primary job. And I don't know what, if any of the CDBG money or the SMART grant money also went to pay for this position?
That does not, and that's our full-time clerk position, which is Teresa Gordon. So yes, there, you know, dispatch was one of the duties that was included that she does. But she does a lot of other duties at the senior center. And so she would just be reallocated to other jobs there. Or, and basically, you know, be able to probably not have the stacks and volume of workload. You know, what that's going to mean as far as, you know, affecting her job? There's, there's an ample amount of work to be done in that, that she does outside of, of just dispatch.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a quick note.
Yes.
Um, just, I, I believe about at least last year, the township, and again, I apologize, I'm trying to get up to speed on all these facts. But the township was reimbursed for services rendered to the residents. And I will say, I, NODA, in its current form, Addison, Orion, Orion Township, Oxford, Oxford Township, has a great reputation. I know a lot of friends, people that live there and may they, and may not, may or may not use the service directly, but they've spoken highly. Again, looking through the lens of my residents and the people we represent, we're doubling, geographically, we're doubling the footprint. And probably about the same in, in population when you compare the size of respective townships. And I feel like what we're, it's, and again, maybe we have zero say in this and just, if that's the case, then tell us and we'll move on. But it seems that the county is stronger through the strengths of, of the, the townships and the cities that, that comprise this county. And so, you know, you have, you have NODA that's done a great job for the northeast part of the town, of the county. We had our, our form through SMART, there was a Western version. And so, that being said, what's, what's stopping us from kind of continuing to do what is successful? And maybe through the additional revenue that we're contributing to the larger cause, helping us to bolster and improve and fill the, fill the voids, rather than basically taking all of, not all, but most of our drivers, training them and, and putting on their NODA hat versus Independence Township hat? And really delivering amounts of the same service? I'm, I'm trying to reconcile all this in my head.
So I appreciate the question and this goes back to the conversation that we had last fall. The Independence Township Service, there's nobody here that's going to say anything negative about the service. The difference with the authority-provided service is it's a much larger service area. And so the current service provides service within the community with a few sites outside. When NODA assumes the service for the community, all of the residents within the three communities, part of the Independence Township Service, Independence, Springfield, and Clarkston, will all have access to the entirety of the driving area of NODA. I mentioned earlier, as part of the conversation, that NODA's looking at a fleet of twice as many vehicles, providing a level of service that they're going to be, content will be adequate in order to get started here within the next couple of weeks. These are indications that we have a professional operator who's done the appropriate background work. They've been registering the residents from these communities and are looking forward to delivering the services. There's none of us who can guarantee what the future will, will be. But what I can assure you is that Oakland County is looking at limiting the number of authorities that we support because there's economies of scale. The larger driving area is something that is more easily accommodated. When you look at the, what is it, 1,000 square miles of Oakland County and, you know, 1.3 million people, we would not be able to facilitate their 62 cities, villages, and townships. By having a handful of authorities, it enables us to have economies of scale, efficiency in operation, and train specialized operators, dispatchers, and the like to meet or exceed what communities are looking for. I appreciate your consideration of how are we going to be sure that this is going to work? I think you have Lynn here, she's been here more times than I. I've come up a few, three times. And the issue is, we're going to be here with you. We have the same aspiration for high levels of service. And that the, the differences are going to hopefully not be seen by the riders. They pick up a phone, they register a ride, and then a driver's going to pick them up. In many instances, it'll be the same drivers because, as was mentioned, they've come over to NODA. It's not like coming over to the dark side. They've taken the opportunity to continue to provide the services that they have. And to know these kinds of services, the drivers have personal relationships with their passengers. The softwares that, that the dispatchers use align the drivers with the passengers because they become friends. And I think that's the same situation, if you're hearing good things about NODA, is because that's the way Lynn runs her operation. And the fact that she's been cooperating, collaborating with the Independence Township staff and vehicles are going to be stored in the community, that's going to be wonderful. They're not going to be coming an hour out of the way to get here. The drivers are going to start their day in Independence Township. They're going to start serving your customers, your clients, your residents, first thing. And I hope it's going to be successful. Can I guarantee it? No, but I know that I can guarantee you'll get all the effort that we have in order to make sure that this works. So that six months from now, we're talking in glowing terms about how well this demonstration process went and how we look forward to service for years to come.
One last point from me. I, just as a board statement, I think that it's important that no matter how we keep the one driver and we keep the dispatcher funded until we figure out this is going to work, to me, is very important. Whether we change their job description or whatever. Teresa's going to be, you know, critical in monitoring calls that slip through the crack or people contacting her. That's who's been, she's been talking to for her forever. You know, she's got a relationship with most of the residents. So I wouldn't have a problem at all trying to figure out their job descriptions to make sure that we have a driver on call all, you know, during the day in case something, emergency comes up. We have one operating or two operating vans that are under our control through SMART, so that's separate from NODA anyway. And that we have Teresa, you know, pick up the, the, the input and monitoring from the complaints and the, and the compliments as part of her thing. And also, she would need to be, be part of the dispatch team if we had a situation where we needed to react with our driver. You know, I think that those two people still need to be in, in play, in my opinion, until we figure out what the final outcome is. As far as what you said, in the fall, we talked about, that we tried to see if they would just let us have, you know, 400 grand of the 1.8 and let us go about our business and then let people to the expanded area use NODA that wanted to go farther. And we typically do, but that wasn't, that's not the county's plan right now. They want to be in charge of all of it. So we did try to subsidize it too, so we could be the small-town bus. And then they had NODA as the farther distances, but that's not part of it. So the only thing I'm not really clear on is this agreement, the pilot. What, what, what possibly could we negotiate into the pilot program, other than we're not getting any of the 1.8 million? The six months comes up, we have two choices. We, we, you know, hopefully it goes well, but worst-case scenario, it doesn't. We self-fund our own program again with the SMART buses. That's about, that's about it. I don't think it gets any more, any more complicated than that, does it? I mean, that would be our two options at the end of the six months, fund it ourselves or deal it.
I don't want to open all kinds of options, but I did mention that the county has five operators we have contracts with. There are other operators, Woda, just to the south of Independence, could be an option. But at this point, you know, Woda has recently expanded up into the Northwest and they're serving the Holly community. And so that the conversation that Independence Township has had with NODA, and I think there's an affinity between where the destinations are, where Independence, Clarkson, Springfield residents are traveling is more to the east than to the west. So I think there's a lot of logic to this relationship. But understand that, you know, wheels can travel on the roads, there's no quote-unquote mote. And if, for whatever reason, that NODA was not able to meet your expectation, what we could talk about is, are any of the other operators better situated in order to provide a higher level of service? I can tell you right now, I think they're all at a very high level, they're all premium-type carriers. But that is something that you'll have more of an experience going forward with NODA in the short-term future.
And I was no way leaning in that direction, that NODA wasn't going to come through and Woda would.
And much as you guess you are.
More than, my concern and the concerns of others is just the personal thing, the last minute thing. You know, the, the service that we have provided is just a little bit different. And if there's a way, if the county could find it in their heart to let us have a little bone and have a couple of vans, you know, in case we needed them, that would be the ideal scenario for me. But I, I don't know about this motion about what this all would entail, the pilot program, but...
So I think the motion was the accept. It's just maybe to send a message to the county that you're willing to look at this at, with honesty and understand that the, it's going to go for six months and then we're going to reevaluate. And it's nothing more than that, you're not agreeing to anything, you're not doing anything. And then with a further set of direction that we can negotiate with, with Dan Kelly's office. Help with NODA for the separate piece of the parking, a, a security gate across Clinton Wood, those kinds of things.
So we would be a hub for the buses here, so that's, that's comforting. At least the buses are starting here. At least the buses are starting here.
Lack of better term, I don't know if we ever called it a hub, but...
And not in another township, you know?
I called it a hub.
No, that makes sense.
So that's better.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we've also gotten price quotes to do an automatic gate. So that was, um, that would be something that would remain in Independence Township.
Yeah, we have preliminarily talked about what that would look like.
So we've gotten quotes, we already have three quotes, we're ready to, you know, our board's actually approved it. So they're, um, and we've met with, um, Park Office and Jerry and, uh, they've made a little area in the, in that, yeah, in the, in the Park Office, uh, for the drivers to pick up the keys and the tablets and the phones and, and use that back office to, um, start and end their day. Because we'll be there before and after with the senior centers closed, which is the reason why the automatic gate was needed, so that it would be secure. Um, and then, uh, the drivers could still have access.
Just a follow-up, none of that's been agreed to because you haven't agreed to it. And it's not been brought forward. But it will be if we come close to some sort of document that we can bring to you.
Okay. Trustee Ritchie?
I was just going to comment on, uh, on, I guess, the overall thing. I think this is a sorrow that's had a Band-Aid on it and it's, it is what it is. And, you know, you're just going to rip the Band-Aid off and go. And, um, to me, I think we just need to move forward with this program. I agree with, uh, the comments that were made. Uh, I guess I'd like to keep the, the one gentleman and lady to, uh, facilitate at least the one bus, uh, for the next, say, six months for the trial period. Uh, that way we, you know, if something does fall through the cracks, we do have a backup plan to try and help those people. And, uh, but, uh, I think in the next six months, obviously, we're just going to bring up as many comments as we can. And I, obviously, we're not going to get, you're, you're going to get a nice automatic gate instead of 1.400,000 or any other part of the 1.8 million. So, uh, your bone, Sam, is, uh, you got a, uh, a gate. So, no, I mean, there's other benefits. I'm, I'm trying to minimize that. But, uh, uh, I, you know, I just think we need to move forward. It's, 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 maybe Independence Township didn't vote for this, uh, village, but overall it was voted. And I think we need to participate in and take advantage of it and, and make it be as, as good as we can be. And, you know, we need to move forward to, in that, that manner anyway.
Trustee Delamont?
I was going to say, I'm ready to make a motion and the fact that it still says it's going to go with the Kelly Firm and it's still going to come back to us. So I think we should just give it a whirl. And if this expands services for people that need it, I'm, I'm for that part of this whole thing. So I moved to accept the...
Hold on, uh, uh, Treasure Brown wants to talk. I, I give you a time because you raised a hand. Treasure Brown?
I'm going to make a motion.
You can, you can.
So I think some great comments. And so, kind of my looking at this, if this pro, we go, if we go six months down the road with this, this program and it's not, it's not everything we want it to be, by saying no, we essentially are going to say the 1.8 million is gone. We're not going to get that for whatever we need to do to, to bolster it. I don't see how we would ever say we're done with this. The question would be down the road, do we create some kind of a supplemental program here to handle probably a smaller number of residents who need help while still keeping everything we can get from, out of the 1.8 million? Because if we still have some residents who, who need some additional specialized care, we can come up with some way to do that. But it's certainly, we're not going to, we're not going to benefit by turning down what we have an opportunity to get out of the, out of the 1.8 million they're taking. But it doesn't mean we can't solve the other side of that for I think what will be a smaller number of people who might need some other level of care. We can still do that as a board. So that was my thought.
Yeah. Anyone else? Go for it. Yeah.
Do you want to make the motion, Paul? If you can handle it?
No.
Okay.
Well, before you make the motion, you know, I, I think everybody brought a valid point today. And, and I guess the biggest concern is hopefully, you know, we want to provide the highest best benefit for residents, you know, for seniors. And we hope for the best and we're going to try it and see what happens. But, um, I think, um, I hope for the best, that's all I can tell you guys. All right.
Okay, I'll move to accept the NODA pilot program update and follow Legos' recommendation to obtain a separate agreement with North Oakland Transportation Authority. Wherein the pilot program terms, representations and promises as to services and funding are set forth with greater specificity and direct the Kelly Firm PLC to draft an agreement between Independence Township and NODA and present it to the board for approval at a future meeting. All support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for all the hard work.
And your patience with us.
Okay. Nancy?
Good evening, everyone. Indo International is a pharmaceutical company that produced and manufactured opioids. They were also responsible for marketing and promoting those opioids and potentially did not provide a clear picture on the addictive nature of those drugs. So that organization was included, um, there was lawsuit filed against them in the national opioid settlements. This is not a settlement that's before you tonight. What's going on is that before they reached the final terms of a settlement, uh, Indo has filed for bankruptcy. And that notice that was sent to the county went, excuse me, to the township, went out to many, many, many municipalities to ask them to vote about whether to accept the restructuring plan that is proposed as part of the bankruptcy or not. Um, this went out to municipalities, but it was really more so intended probably for the private litigants that are going to be filing. So the township has an opportunity to cast a ballot and it may do so. The township also has an opportunity to just take no action, which it may do. The end result will be if the bankruptcy restructuring plan is approved, whether the township votes or not, the plan, the settlement arrangements will be made with the state of Michigan, who will then potentially make an arrangement for the local municipalities to sign on and receive funds. So to be clear, this has nothing to do with refund, with funds that will be received. There are no direct payments even proposed in the Indo, um, settlement to local municipalities. It would go to private and then there would be portions that went to the states who will then filter it down like they have in the other ones that you have seen. So before you is, is basically, do you want to cast the ballot to say, we want to vote yes, no, or abstain? And then if you vote yes, you're automatically, you know, issuing a release waiver, um, that you are not going to bring your own independent claim against, uh, Indo International. So that's before you can take action or to cast the ballots or you may determine that you don't want to cast the ballot. The ultimate result to the township, in our opinion, is that it will depend on what agreement the state reaches anyway.
Okay, thank you Nancy. Any questions from board members? Any comments?
Yeah, I don't, I don't get it. So, so the question is, is, is it, it sounds like there's risks if we actually cast the vote versus doing nothing.
The risk to actually casting the vote really isn't there. Um, I, I have not been advised of this. It's my opinion that will likely happen is they'll look at the votes that were cast and determine which ones are valid or not. It's not going to go towards the actual determination. There, in, in our opinion, there is very little risk in taking no action or casting the vote. It's the same level of risk for the township, there really isn't any. I received a notification this weekend that the, uh, folks that brought the suit are going to provide a little bit more clarification. They put, put a draft letter together to explain, help government entities understand that their participation in casting a vote or not is not going to impact whether they would receive funds ultimately or not.
However, that will come after the due date of the ballot.
Yes. That was the point of coming before the board is this was planned to be before the board because the ballots need to be cast by February 22nd. So if there was a need to cast a ballot, we would have needed to do it at this board meeting. So some of that information came Sunday, at which point we probably would have, uh, taken a different approach. But since it was on the agenda and the information was provided to the board, we wanted, didn't want to pull it and create an appearance of pulling or anything like that, so you'd know what it was about.
I mean, is there a recommendation to, to accept on the hypothetical that the state could end up in a position to distribute said funds? Or with an, with a rejection? Are we, we out of that?
With a rejection?
Reject the...
So, so the way that it's written, even if you cast a vote to say no, it's still not going to impact, uh, whether you receive funds from the state or not?
So really, this is more about the reorganization.
This is absolutely about voting to approve the reorganization and restructuring plan. Has nothing to do with the settlement funds.
So once they iron this out and then it ends up going to the state with whatever they plan on, I mean, how that plays out, then the state will award...
The state would award funds, they would likely utilize the same formula that they have in the past, but they were not able to comment as there has not been a final decision reached yet right now.
Do we have to formally abstain?
There's an option to formally abstain.
What if we just decide that, okay, we're, thank you for coming Nancy, have a good night.
I would say, thank you so much, have a great night.
You don't have to take action.
Yeah, and it would be my professional opinion that, that there would be no risk in taking no action.
No action, okay. Do you need to make the formal motion to take no action?
No, no one makes a motion.
Okay.
Thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
That was very confusing.
Okay, we're not taking action, so moving on. Um, so we go for a closed session.
That's it, yes, you ready for that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'll make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.2431G, for the purposes of discussing a written legal opinion regarding an employee issue and to discuss the terms of an employment contract at 7:30, 8:00 PM.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
It's a rule.
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call?
Roll call.
Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to return from closed session and resume the regular meeting at P. 11.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any other thoughts? Okay, we're not making any decision or anything so... Communication, future agenda items. Number one, report organ community chair of department, January 2024. Two, building department activity, January 2024. Three, audit advisory committee, September 12, 2023. Four, information technology oversight committee, January 16, 2024. Five, election commission, January 16, 2024. Board member comments. Anyone? Okay, any other motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.